Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the session of Quis-Pam-Sis Town Council Regular Meeting for October 4th, 2022. I'm asking for an approval of the agenda, please. Councillor Biggar has been moved by Councillor Biggar, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schrier on the question. There are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Mayor's comments this evening, as you can see, we are wearing pink this evening, or we have our little pins on as well for those who... We are recognizing that the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. For all men and women who have had a cancer diagnosis, we want to, we want you to know that we support you and that we will continue encouraging research to ensure that we have the best quality of life for those with a cancer diagnosis. And also thank you to all those who took part in the CIBC Run for the Cure this past weekend. And by now, probably most people know that home assessments have increased this past week, and I just want you to know that Quis-Pam-Sis does not evaluate our homes. We set the tax rate, but the home evaluation increase, the assessment increase, is put forth by the Minister of Local Government and Local Government Reform. So this will mean that there will be an increase, and it will mean probably about $8 billion to the province of New Brunswick. So with that, I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Schrier to read the moment of reflection, please.
We wish, we would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quis-Pam-Sis exists on the traditional territory of the Wallis-Takey-Malasi-Mick-Mack people, whose ancestors along the Pasimakwadi tribes signed peace and friendship treaties in the British Crown in the nineteen, in the seventeen hundreds. We would like to take a moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. We would also like to take a moment to reflect upon our solidarity and support for the people of Ukraine, acknowledging that Canada has the third largest Ukrainian population in the world, behind Ukraine itself and Russia. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schrier. I am looking for any disclosure of interests this evening. I don't see any, so we will move on to item number five. And this evening, we have a presentation by the Food Cycle Science. And this was a group that I had met when I was at a conference, and they would like to share their information with us. Also in attendance this evening, we have the Executive Director of the Local Fundy Regional Service Commission. And he certainly can contribute any information that we would like to have from his point of view as well. So in attendance this evening virtually, we have Christina Zardo, Director of Municipal Solutions, and Jacob Hanlon, Municipal Program Coordinator. So welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me here tonight. Unfortunately, Christina will not be attending this presentation, but I will take it from here, so I'm just going to share my screen.
Thank you very much, Jacob, and we have about ten minutes for your presentation.
Perfect. Okay, can you confirm you can see my screen, please?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll get started. So I just want to thank you for having me here virtually tonight, Mayor and members of council and staff. I'm here on behalf of Food Cycle Science's Municipal Solutions Team to discuss a residential solution to food waste. So I will very briefly go over who we are. Food Cycle Science is a Canadian clean technology company based out of Ottawa, and our goal is one hundred percent focused on food waste diversion solutions using our innovative technology called the Food Cyclr. Our in-home food recycler is sold through our partners directly to consumers. Our partners here are Vitamix and Breville. And in addition to that, we also have very successful residential programs, which helps municipalities divert more food waste and reduce their greenhouse gas emissions that are associated with waste. I will also mention that Food Cycle Science is a finalist in Impact Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge, and we've been awarded funding to go towards our municipal programs. So we work with many small rural, remote, and northern communities. As of today, there are forty-two municipalities across Canada who have signed on to the Food Cyclr program. These programs range from fifty household pilots all the way up to extensive programs that put a Food Cyclr unit into every household within a municipality. So now, the problem with food waste is that it is avoidable. It accounts for a large portion of our household waste. It's smelly, and it's made up of mostly liquid, which is heavy and can freeze in the winter. On top of that, food waste decomposing in the landfill is responsible for generating harmful greenhouse gases that can contribute to the impacts of climate change that we're seeing today. So all these factors make it so that food waste is a problem that has a strong municipal impact. So one of the impacts to municipalities is that since food waste makes up such a large portion of our household waste stream, it's causing our landfills to fill up quickly. Landfill costs and waste collection costs are a major cost to a municipality and ultimately to taxpayers. The environmental impact would be when organic waste decomposes in landfills, it's very compressed and doesn't have access to oxygen, so it's in a... Which causes it to produce methane gas, which is greenhouse gas many times more harmful than CO2, and it's a major contributor to climate change. In terms of our communities, putting food waste in the bin outside can cause some interesting odors, which can attract unwanted visitors like bears, raccoons, and other vermin. So removing food waste from the garbage eliminates these issues, and it reduces the volume of garbage. For the town, this can save on operations and collection costs, and it can extend the lifespan of landfills. For residents, there is less waste, there's no smell, and the garbage is much easier to manage. So we often get asked, haven't we solved this already? There are options available, like green bins, which millions of Canadians are accustomed to. But this type of service is popular in large cities with large, or sorry, with high population densities, and typically an investment in expensive infrastructure as well. And many people in your community might backyard compost, and we love that, we think it's fantastic. But the reality is that many people may not have the space, the ability, or even the desire to do that at home, and participation rates have been pretty stagnant for decades. And finally, we can continue to landfill our organics, but the long-term impacts here are costly and harmful to the environment. So at Food Cyclr, we've proposed a different way to deal with our food waste, which really focuses on making food waste very easy to deal with and right in our homes. Essentially, what we've done is built a small kitchen appliance. It's about the size of a bread machine. And you put your food waste in. This can include meat, poultry, fish, dairy, even some bones. And you push a button, and then in a matter of hours, you have a dry, sterile, odorless, and nutrient-rich soil amendment that comes out. The machine can be used anywhere with a plug, and most people store it in their kitchen, their basement, or even in a heated garage. So the Food Cyclr will process on average one kilogram of food waste per cycle. Each cycle takes between four and eight hours to complete, and it uses less than a kilowatt hour of power, which is the equivalent to having a computer plugged in for the same amount of time. The result is about a handful of dry, sterile, and odorless soil amendment that could be used in a garden, in an existing composting system. It can be given to a local farm, or even processed with leaf and yard waste systems. From an environmental standpoint, the Food Cyclr compares to backyard composting and anaerobic digestion facilities. But in terms of the greenhouse gas impact, it represents an approximate reduction of ninety-five percent of greenhouse gas emissions compared to sending food waste to a landfill. On average, each Food Cyclr divert, it's around three hundred kilograms of solid food waste per household per year from going to the landfill. And for every ton of food waste that is diverted, about 1.3 tons of CO2 equivalent emissions are prevented from entering the atmosphere. So in terms of an economic impact, our solution offers a return on investment by significantly reducing your waste management costs. In the short term, you have less disposal and lower operating costs. And in the long term, you'll extend the life of your landfill, and you'll achieve higher diversion without having to implement any costly curbside programs. With a traditional waste program, we generate our waste, we put it in a bin or in a bag, and it ultimately ends up buried in the landfill, either through collection services or self-off residents. But with the Food Cyclr, you have a resident generating waste and processing it right at home. And this takes away the need to add any new trucks or put new services on the road, and the residents can benefit from generating their own fertilizer to enrich their garden soil. And on top of that, your community can achieve higher diversion, especially without implementing any costly programs. So one thing we've learned from working with our municipal partners is that residents are very interested in being part of the solution. They want to try new things, and they want to do the perp to fight climate change, and they want their government to bring these things into their community. With the Food Cyclr, you get to bring something innovative and tangible to your residents. And they don't need to live in a big city to be able to divert their organics. We think that food waste should be available, sorry, food waste diversion should be available to every Canadian, no matter where they live. And on top of this social pressure from residents, many municipalities and counties are implementing greenhouse gas diversion targets for their communities through various climate action plans. And so it's important to have a plan in place that meets these goals and also works for your community. With the Food Cyclr, what we're doing is reducing waste at the source, and we're kind of focusing on that low-hanging fruit because since food waste accounts for such a large portion of our waste stream, it's the single most impactful strategy to achieving these diversion targets. So I mentioned earlier that we're working with several municipalities across Canada. To date, we've completed pilots in over three thousand households across twenty-four municipalities, and the results have been overwhelmingly positive. We have very high levels of participation, and we've achieved a significant amount of net new diversion. Almost everyone who participated would recommend Food Cyclr and will continue using it upon the completion of their programs. An example here would be in the city of Nelson, B.C. Their council voted to put a Food Cyclr in every home in the city of ten thousand people following the success of their two pilot projects. So in our municipal programs, we work with the municipalities and offer a subsidy model, where Food Cycle Science provides a discount, as well as some federal funding from Impact Canada. And this brings down the price of the unit from a $500 retail price to $250. And we then ask the municipalities to subsidize the cost by at least $100 per unit plus shipping, so that the resident only ends up paying around $150 for a $500 machine. And some municipalities will share the cost with the residents by subsidizing more than $100 per unit. But ultimately, this cost-sharing model allows Food Cycle Science, the federal government, the municipality, and the resident to each have a hand in funding this food waste production program. And so for a municipality of your size, for example, we'd recommend a pilot project of around a hundred units or more, and the $250 unit cost would be shared between the resident and the municipality in a format similar to the one here on the screen. And a one hundred household pilot program would be a net cost to the municipality of 10,000, plus shipping and HSD. So I'd like to welcome your town to be part of this initiative, as we believe that your community would be a great fit for the benefits of this program. And today, I kindly ask that you receive our presentation, and if there is interest in a program to refer this to staff for a report and a recommendation. I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to present to you today, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Hanlon. I will open it up. There is a motion to be put forward. Councillor Miller.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon, for your presentation. I got a couple of questions on the food recycler itself, so I'll give you all, I'll give you three, so I'll give you three to start with. So three questions are, what's the lifespan of the machine? Are your filters biodegradable or recyclable? And is it made from recycled materials? And then I have something else after that, or I'll let somebody else go. Thanks.
Thank you for the questions. Those are all great questions. To start, this unit that we currently are implementing in households, it has a five-to-seven-year lifespan. And that typically lines up with a lot of the waste contracts that we've been seeing in terms of a five-plus-one-plus-one type contract. And then the other thing, just on that topic, two things on the topic, actually, we have a new unit coming out in the spring as well that has closer to a seven-to-ten-year lifespan. And that one, it's the same countertop footprint, about one cubic foot, but we've engineered it so that the capacity of it has doubled. So instead of two-and-a-half-liter-sized bucket, it's actually a five-liter bucket. Last point on that first question is, we work with municipalities to implement warranties as well. So typically, the standard is a one-year warranty, but if it was a program that lasted three, five, seven years, we would likely do a warranty for that whole period, because this is essentially a waste contract, if it ends up being that type of program. And when your garbage can breaks in front of your house, you typically can get one from the town for free. So it's, it's kind of the same type of idea there. Your second question, the filters, yes, they are. So the carbon filters, it's essentially a plastic filter that has carbon pellets in it. The carbon pellets are biodegradable, and the plastic filter is fully recyclable. Once that first one runs out, we have reusable filters that replace that, so that the plastic does not need to be thrown out. You just dump out the, the carbon pellets and refill it, and put that same filter right back into the Food Cyclr. We work with municipalities to have these refill stations and have refillable filter options involved with the programs as well. So these are all things that can be tailored towards municipalities specifically. And your last question, correct me if I'm wrong, you asked if the machine is built from recycled plastic?
If the, if the, if the machine was made from recyclable material, recycled material, or new material?
Okay. Okay, so the machine is made from new material, but it is one hundred percent recyclable, as well as the electronic components in there, they're fully recyclable as well. So I'll note that in our new unit, it's a modular unit, the one that's coming out this spring. So if there are ever any issues, the whole unit doesn't have to be replaced, just modular components of it can be replaced. But in terms of this current unit that has been implemented in all of our municipalities so far, it is new material, but fully recyclable.
Thank you. I'm going to go to next in queue, Deputy Mayor Schrier.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon, for your presentation. It was very informative and nice to know that there's always new, new inventions coming on to deal with recycling and our landfill usage. With that, I'm prepared to put a motion forward that a copy of the Food Cyclr Municipal Solutions, the Future of Food Waste Presentation, be issued to the Fundy Regional Service Commission, as well as the Town of Quis-Pam-Sis Climate Change Committee for information process purposes, sorry.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schrier, seconded by Councillor Miller on the question.
Yeah.
Councillor Miller.
Yeah, sorry, it's on a question, but just to, when it's brought forth, I think we got to make sure that we also compare it to the carbon footprint of what we already have. We already have, and I don't know if Mr. Jacob, if Jacob is aware of this, or sorry, Mr. Hanlon is aware of this, but we actually have the gentleman here from our Fundy Recycling at our meeting tonight for, for the next topic. But we currently have one of the highest, from what I understand, recycling around. We actually have compost bins, and they go, they get picked up every two weeks, so we do have the trucks going by. We do have methane capture and a few other things, but these are great, and I think especially for smaller areas, but we got to look at what we do now and what is the overall carbon footprint, because we can't look at it at its simple, not simple, but in its own state. We got to look at what we're doing now, and that's where the, the committee that has this, I'm just saying, make sure we get, excuse me, get the information from Mr. McLeod to find out what the pros and cons are from what we're doing now, because it, there may not be any savings, because our trucks are still going to go pick up, we're still going to go to the compost, and, and I don't think everybody's going to buy one, so thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Miller. Next in line, Councillor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to build off of what Councillor Miller had said. I actually think this is an amazing unit. I know that we do have a very high percentage of people recycling, but as someone that doesn't like maggots, I would spend the $250 to, without even municipal support, to get a unit like this. If I knew I could actually even put it in my compost bin after I've taken the moisture and the smell and everything else out. So I think it's an amazing technology. So I guess, I guess I'm making the comment that when it goes to the Climate Change Committee, perhaps based on looking at, you know, where we're at in terms of our own waste management and how much, you know, it's impacting our carbon footprint. You know, I'd still like for them to look at, could this still be maybe an option for residents because we are, you know, I guess so heavy into recycling already? To even look at, you know, would it be a possibility to do some type of pilot and even not have the municipality offset the cost, but still capitalize on the federal opportunity to still get a, a unit at fifty percent off? It might be something that I think a lot of residents would like. I know myself, I would love to have one in the summer for composting. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. If I can just comment on that, so we, our pilot programs, they are quite unique to each municipality, and we have done some where the municipality does put the full $250 cost onto the residents. And in that case, it's, it's a bit more where residents who are interested in it and who want something like that, they're the ones who put forth the, the full discounted cost, and the municipality does not have to put any money in. So that is definitely an option. And, you know, I'll just make a comment on, on some of the previous words there. In a perfect world, there are options. I don't think there's one-size-fits-all for, for waste recycling and organics as well. So I, we've had different municipalities consider this as an option in addition to what they're already doing. So I, I respect all the comments that have been made, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. There's one more here from Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have one quick question. I know you had mentioned that it takes four to eight hours to process sort of meat and fish and whatever. Is there any odor coming from that?
Thank you for the question. Because of the carbon, carbon filters inside, there are no odors. Whether the food is sitting stagnant in there before a cycle for a few hours or during the cycle, no odors escape it, and then the byproduct as well is odor-free.
Thank you very much. And on the question, motion's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schrier, seconded by Councillor Miller. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Hanlon. Nice to see you here this evening. Have a nice rest of your evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Have a great evening.
Five B, Fundy Region Service Commission New Local Government Reform and Proposed 2023 FRSC, Fundy Regional Service Commission Budget. And this evening, we have with us the CE, the Executive Director of the Fundy Regional Service Commission. And we have Mark McLeod, and Mark is going to go through the budget so that we have a greater understanding of it. And we will have a question period at the end of it. Welcome this evening, Mr. McLeod. Thank you for being here. And I, I just would like to preface this with saying that Mr. McLeod is the calculator for the Regional Service Commission. So he takes the numbers that are available, and he puts them into making some sense and allocating those numbers as to where they should be, so he does not create those. The new numbers that we see have been brought forward by the Minister of Local Government and Local Government Reform. So, Mr. McLeod, I'll turn it over to you.
Can everyone hear me fine? Yeah, okay. I'd just like to say hi to former councillors that I've worked with in the past, and the Solid Waste Commission, Councillor Thompson and Councillor Olson, so thank you for having me. And hi, Mr. Lojé from Swimming. We won't talk about regional facility, so maybe we will. I'm just going to comment, if I can lead off with the sales pitch from the last group, I just, you know, appreciate that being moved forward, but I just would caution that a lot of what the individual said in that, in that presentation was somewhat misleading. So we just want to be careful moving forward on those kind of projects, you know. Just suggesting that that material is compost is a misnomer. And, you know, in its simplest form, compost is a process involving bacteria that break down food waste and make it into a usable organic form in the soil. This is a drying-out system, which is no different than a tree falling in the forest and drying out and contributing to CO2 in the atmosphere. So I'd love to see the science before I would make a comment on that. I'd just be interested to see how they, how they prove that. So we need to be careful with those sorts of things. So it is a sales pitch. So thank you for referring that to us, and, you know, we'll take a harder look at it and give you our, our honest opinion on that sort of thing, so thank you. So I digress. This year, obviously, is a different year than what we've been used to in the past. The previous process has been for us to, to generate a budget for you that's basically a final copy that our members have seen, and then we present it to you with a forty-five-day window for comment. And then your member comes back, we make our adjustments, and the budget is basically signed, sealed, and delivered. This year, that process has been taken away. It's basically now been a revisionist type of approach, where we're putting forward a budget for comment. We take those comments back, we make those adjustments, obviously, because we're on version five now. And we take those comments back, and we continue to make adjustments. And based on the minister's announcement just before this meeting, we'll be making a version six fairly soon. So exciting stuff, but, but it's not fun. I can say that. Because, because, you know, we're, we're always, I'm used to giving a final budget where I can justify each line item and kind of go through that. This budget considers six new services. item and kind of go through that, this budget considers six new services which we haven't had in the past, so I will open up by saying that the services that you do have, the local planning side, you guys don't participate in, but that's gone a bit lower with the hiring of our new CEO who has planning background, but the solid waste side, you are seeing a $10 tip fee increase, and that is so associated solely with inflation, that $10 tip fee, basically $8.72 of that is associated with fuel increases, and quite frankly, and labor, and a collection study that we're doing with all the municipalities, and even our fuel prices right now that we budgeted are below what the market is right now, so, you know, we're playing a risky game, but that's where the tip fee increase comes from, that being said, before all this came, our predictive index had us at $10 for this year without all the inflation, so we've kind of kept it flat, we've eliminated about $700,000 from the budget previous to the inflationary pressure, so, so that's pretty good, we're at, now jumping to the six new services, we're adding six new services, we have basically tourism and promotion and economic development, which we've, as a process, we've been working with a working group, including your CAO, including the other CAOs from municipalities and some other, and their transition leader and myself, and representative of local service districts in the sense of the local service manager, and we've been working through options under each of these six new mandated services, and tried to come forward with some solutions, and I can say that, basically, there's been, even at that level, there's been a kind of a, I don't know if I'm saying the right word, but dichotomy, but basically two ends and very difficult to get in the middle, so, a lot of the work that we've had to do has been very challenging, that being said, we've had some principal agreements, tourism and promotion and economic development are going to be, we've agreed that we're trying to pursue at the working group level anyway, with Envision, providing that service, and that's how we're budgeted, and it's maintaining the same cost structure that was set in a previous agreement prior to this announcement, and you should see those numbers reflected there, they shouldn't be different, but the addition to that is, we are going to be managing that file, so there is corporate costs associated with that, so on each of these, there are corporate costs associated, and I will say that we have our corporate cost set at $600,000, that's artificially low compared to our counterparts, and it was difficult because, you know, they're in the 900 to million dollar range, but when everyone saw that we were going up from 300 to 900, it was a bit of a heart attack, but I will say this, is that we have had the advantage over the past number of years, that when our previous executive director retired, I took over both jobs, and we didn't replace him, we didn't replace the admin assistant, and we shut down the office, so now we have a new person coming in, all these, and there will be supportive staff and things like that, so we're going to see those costs increase, especially as we take on some of these mandates, but for this year, it's just up to $600,000, we've eliminated 300,000 from the original version, so that is all allocated to these new services, so, again, tourism, promotion, economic development with Envision, community development, we're hiring funded 95, 90, 95% by the government, we're funding, again, a community and inclusion network coordinator, we haven't hired that position yet, but that individual has existed in the past, worked through, I believe it was Living SJ, but now they're going to report through us in a more structured, more structured environment, so that staff will be in there, but again, it's funded externally, that being said, there's still going to be committee work at each of these levels, so we will have a committee dealing with community development and help them set the direction and strategy of the commission in the future, regional transportation, again, another one, which is just going to be committee work, no employees at this time, and again, the new CEO will be coming in and taking this through transition and establishing these committees to do the work that we need to do moving forward, public safety committee is the exact same thing, we're already in contact with EMO and working with them, and resilience NB, and coming up with a committee structure that'll work there as well, but again, corporate costs associated with supporting those kind of things, and then the latest one is, of course, the sports and recreation facilities, which currently fall under the Greater St. John Facilities Act, or Greater, it's a long title, but anyway, at the end of the day, I call it the GSJ, and so, version four, which I think you might have, I'm not sure what version you're looking at now, I've sent out a version five, okay, so version four had the original arrangement, which was four members under the GSJ, but with the additional burden of the capital costs, this version includes a spread using 50% population, 50% tax base for all members of the commission, including the new entities, which I think is from the St. Martins, and then, of course, the remaining rural district, so that's how the funding mechanism is worked, and I understand that some of this will be offset by the minister's announcement today, but that, or possibly offset that way, but that's not reflected in version five, because I obviously didn't hear about it in time to make any revisions, and, so anyway, with that, Your Worship, I would leave it open, I'd leave it open to questions, because, again, when we had talked, I was more here to answer questions about the budget than actually present specifics.
Great, thank you very much, we'll go first to Counselor Miller, please.
Actually, it's not, my first question is, I didn't hear the announcement, so what is the announcement today, I was at work all day.
There's been an announcement from local government for funding to the, that'll be allocated through local government, that is going to be applied against our expenses for next year, and then, I believe it's a five-year agreement, I don't know all the details, it's new to me, and it's like a five-year agreement, and they'll be, it will be applied against the budget for each individual member of the commission, but what those values are, I don't have in front of me at this time, but, yeah, so, and each municipality have a certain amount of that allocation to that, and it's tied in, I don't think at the expense of, I think it's tied in with equalization and everything like that, so it's all one big announcement, there's, you know, you have your equalization portion, and then your RRC portion, that's how I understand it, and I understand it won't be at the expense of pedal funding either for the commission, so, so this is additional money, as I understand it, I'm not promising anything, because I'm not with the province, I'm just being clear, so, so, yeah, version six, version six coming, and as the mayor can attest to, as a member of the commission, you know, possible version seven, who knows, we have, we have lots of discussion yet.
We will continue receiving the versions until we know that it's the right way to go.
And, and that's right, Your Worship, it's just about, as the versions come, the feedback comes, and then we await direction and we make the adjustments, so it's a different process than previously, and perhaps a lot more uncomfortable, certainly uncomfortable for me, but like, but in the shoes of people responsible for tax dollars, it would be even more so, so, I don't envy you.
Thank you, I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, welcome to Quispam Sis.
Thank you.
It's nice to have you here, and to get some clarity on the budget, and so I'm just on the last page of the budget.
Sure.
Which is sort of a summarizes, breaks it down for each municipality, so, I just wanted to clarify that Quispam Sis additional amount is $52,662 for the new services.
Yeah, so that's for the new corporate charges, so.
Right.
What you'll look at on your, on your file, you'll see TP1, ED1, CD1, all those, those are associated, those are the corporate charges, and then you add those up, and that'll give you that number.
So my question is on those corporate charges.
Yeah.
Where, you know, we're looking at adding economic ED-1 was $7,900, something like that for Quispam Sis, but we already give money to economic development, so my understanding was that they were going to take economic development's budget and place it in here, so I don't understand why we're seeing more charges or more budget lines for economic development, we have tourism, which economic development, we did a, well, you know all this, we, a few years, it was all amalgamated, and now they're in charge of tourism, but again, we see another line item for tourism, TD1, same with community, well, community development, I can understand now that you've explained that it's inclusion, but again, regional transportation, we have transit, St. John Transit, so I, I'm not quite sure, I understand that there are corporate dollars for, and it's not for programming or anything like that, but if we, why that we actually have organizations overseeing these services right now, are we adding to the pot, and who made the decision that they would be added to the budget?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, on that, so, I guess, at the end of the day, the province has made the decision that we would be delivering the service mandates associated with each of these individual files, and ultimately, at some point, from a regional perspective, these will be managed, and they're not managed at a regional perspective right now, so, and there's a corporate cost associated with that, because, of course, we have a CEO and all the affiliated costs with running a corporate office, and so we will be establishing or measuring or communicating with, even though Envision will have an obligation to you under the previous agreement, and understanding that, at the end of the day, it'll be us they're answering to, because they'll be providing a regional service, so that has to be managed, and so that's not free, and the committee work associated with that at the regional level will include members of the commission and those sorts of things, and there's costs associated with any of that kind of work as well, so ultimately, it's just an apportioned share of the amount of work, apportioned work that we think that the staff and the, and the other corporate costs will be allocated to the economic development file, it's not contained within the economic development file, or the Envision file, that's a completely separate contract, third-party agreement, and we're, and we're hiring a third party to deliver the service, and that needs to be managed.
Follow-up, yes?
Thank you, I, it just, you know, when you look at the total of it, it's $351,000, when you add them all up together, all the regions are paying an additional 300, total wise, our Greater St. John region is paying $351,000 for those services that are already delivered within certain organizations, so that's why I was just questioning, my, my second question is, the Regional Service Commission, I see that it's, for Quispam Sis, it's $727,529.
This is for the sports and rec?
Yes, that, oh, sorry, SRC.
That's correct.
So I'm assuming that's the regional development, or the regional facilities budget, however, when I looked at the regional facilities budget, it was actually $598,498 that was submitted to council, so we've got a spread here of $129,031, so I'm just wondering what that spread is, if they've already submitted a budget to us, it came, we, I looked at it the other day, and, but, there's a, quite a difference here of $130,000, and I'd like you to explain what, if you could, to me, what that is.
Sure, I, I think the first thing is, is that, again, the service mandate is shifting to the commission for the sports and recreation file, what that looks like, we don't know yet, in the sense of responsibilities and things like that, I think you, you've received an email outlining that we're going to have some kind of operational authority, and budgetary and operational authority over the new facility, over those five facilities, and that being said, our budget allocation has to be set on what the province laid out for the province, so it differs from how your calculations, how your calculations were created through the Regional Facilities Commission, so our numbers are based on a 50% tax rate, and a 50, or tax base, and a 50% population base, and so that changes your numbers from an operational contribution base to $510,380, according to our, according to our calculations, and then additionally, we have been instructed by the province to include the capital allocation as well for four of the five facilities, the, one of the facilities doesn't have that, and that amount was $217,000, accounting for the $727,529, and, and that's how, so this is a split of operational and capital costs through all the communities within the, all the new communities within the region, and that's how the allocation goes, including capital, capital and corporate, so it does, it does, or capital and operational, and that's how it differs, you guys, under your current agreement, under the GSJ, is only operational based, with, and, and, I guess, a clause in there, based on unanimous decision for capital to be considered through operational, and that helps alleviate any ownership issues, I suppose, from a financial perspective, you know, so, so anyway, at the end of the day, that's the, that's how it's written now, but that's been, that's been changed, the only cautionary, well, we made a, the commission members certainly made their opinions heard to the transitional lead team, and the only cautionary tales that we had put forward, and actually, Mayor O'Hara put one of them forward, was that there was concern about the fact that, one, we're, we're investing asset, people, members are investing money into assets for value add, but what is the return on that, certainly from an accounting practice and capital planning for each individual municipality, there's no ownership associated with that, so that's an issue, and then if the asset is sold, and let's say you put in a million dollars of value add, and, and, you know, the return on, and then all of a sudden, it sells for 20 million more than market value, who gets that money, and, and so that's, that's a concern that was put forward by Mayor O'Hara, and the Director O'Hara on the board, and then the, the more concerning part for me, because I'm more of an operational type of person, is that the current capital plan is based solely on the four City of St. John assets, and that capital plan hasn't been scrutinized by anyone outside of the city, except within those, those organizations themselves have done it, and, and certainly myself, I don't have the familiarity with the facilities enough to make a judgment on what capital plan is put forward, because I don't know the assets, other than maybe the pool, been there, I'm there every day practically, so that's where the difference accounts for.
So just so, and just really clear, the $727,529 includes capital?
It does.
But we have no.
Two seventeen, one forty-nine.
Two seventeen, of the five, of the.
Seven fifty.
Five twenty-seven, seven.
No, seven twenty-seven.
Seven twenty-seven, of that, 200, and how much is capital?
Two seventeen, one forty-nine.
Two seventeen is capital.
As it stands.
As it's, okay.
Version five.
Thank you, thank you.
It could change, yeah, I mean, again, the issue, the issue I have with it is that I don't, it's. it's not even clear on the process is the other concern I raised with it, is that if we're going to make these changes as it stands right now, we have the owner, uh, which is the City of St. John, and then we have the council associated with that. And then we have the subcommittee or sub-commissions or whatever they are for each individual facility, if they exist. And then we have the Regional Facilities Commission, and now they want to move in the funding Regional Service Commission. So, um, if that's the way it is, then that's going to be increasing bureaucratic pressure. So I don't think that's appropriate. I'd like to see that different. If it's going to be us just replacing the Regional Facilities Commission, why are we making all these changes, um, just for that? So I think it needs to move, uh, somewhat more aggressively, um, so that there's more of a control from all the members on this budget, especially considering now capital is part of the play. That's, that's one of the concerns we had put forward.
Thank you, I'm going to go to next in queue, and that would be Councilor Miller.
Thank you, Worship. Welcome, Mr. McLeod. You're, you're good.
I'm al- I'm always here only for money.
Yeah, no, no. Um, so I, I just wanted, uh, just, uh, uh, first, uh, go, go on what Deputy Mayor had stated. And, and I guess just for clarification, so on the current budget we're seeing now, uh, Quispam Sis shares about one point five million, give or take, correct? If you look at that final line, we're paying one point five for total fees?
Yes.
Yeah. And if I look at what we would have paid for Envision St. John last year for the region, for the, for all of the shared services, as they call, or shared facilities and our other fee, last year we paid roughly seven hundred and some thousand dollars when I went through our things. So RFC, we paid four ninety, others was about ten K, Envision was two thirteen, so let's round it up to seven fifty. So this new budget as proposed would add roughly seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars to Quispam Sis. If, if that's correct?
I couldn't, I couldn't accurately answer that.
Oh, I guess, yes. But, but from our, from your, from what we got charged last year from, from the Regional Commission, not, not the,
Oh, yes.
Not the, not, it was very minor, it was a very small amount.
Yeah, I think, uh, last year you would have paid, um, for only the cooperative and regional services, which went down to like four hundred now, um, but it's, uh, it was like seventy, seventy-six hundred last year for total billing.
Less than ten thousand.
Yeah, and, and then the other large portion, of course, is, is, uh, basically the tip fees. And that, and we include that in here as a member charge, because under the P SAB accounting practice, they want us to allocate to each of the individual municipalities.
We ended up paying it through FERO, because, because they're doing our pickup.
That's right, it's, it's a paid tip fee value, you know, for us, um, on our revenue line. So at the end of the day, we don't, we don't charge you a member fee. We, FERO pays us a tip fee.
So I guess we could take it out of this and, and from there, okay?
In, in theory, you could, but, but for us, for P SAB purposes, we have to, we have to allocate to members.
Perfect, so we'll get that final number. So I guess my, and I just, I'll be real quick on the other, because I know whether people have questions. So, um, one, just a co- comment, comment on the capital, you just made a few, but I also went through some of the St. John budgets and I found very little money, at least that I could find on the online budgets, for capital for like the Aquatic Center and things like that. So I find it very unfair, you have nothing to say about it, but we'll take it up with our MLAs, I guess, and things like that, and the deputy min- and the minister. But it's just a comment, I mean, I found very little in there, but now we have to pay and, and the committee didn't even get to see a copy of, so there's no vote on it, so it's kind of interesting.
And that concern was communicated.
And you, you had stated too, yeah. Um, and I guess, uh, there's, I just have two more that I'll, I'll, I'll go. So, um, we're originally in draft number, so if everybody wants to pay for capital, or they're saying they do, and they want it to be this regional thing, um, Qplex was on there in June. We have a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit every year. And we put in capital every year, like all of our facilities, we put in a lot of capital, because that keeps our operating costs down. I don't think it's the same everywhere. So who, who made the final decision to pull the Qplex out? Because it was in our draft that we saw in June. And if you want to add that in, we can throw a million dollars on our side in there as well. I, and not your call, but I'm just, just asking.
Well, well, at the end of the day, when everyone was talking about it, um, the remove, first of all, it was, the, the question really was rhetorical in the sense of where, rhetorical is the wrong word, but, uh, we kind of threw it back at the provinces, who's made the decision to put it on there, because it hadn't been vetted by council. And I think that was the bigger concern at the time. So, um, I believe it was removed for those reasons. And, and to your point, um, at the end of the day, one of the concerns that was again brought forward to the province was that on, you know, if, if everyone's going to pay equal share, equal share of capital and operational, well, heck, why don't we make everything that way? If we don't have to give anything up. The intent of the legislation, however, although, you know, it hasn't been applied here, which is why we have expressed the concern, the intent of the legislation is if a facility, or as we understand it, a facility, uh, when it becomes regional, there is a, a lo- um, I guess, a passing of some control, what those controls will be, I'm not sure, that's the concern. But you will pass some of the decision-making power to the commission when a facility is regional. And that in theory is supposed to what happens to these other five facilities. So, um, yeah, so it shouldn't be a, a free ride, because if that was the case, then everybody would just say, oh, this place is regional and you get the free money.
Well, well, I guess, I don't believe, anyways, that the other ones are there for different reasons and there were things added on, like, we never used to pay a lease, now we pay a lease for the art center. That came in, but we mandated to pay it. Um, we got a one point one million dollar operating cost on the, on the aquatic center, let alone, I don't have, none of us have a clue what's being put in for our two hundred and seventeen grand for capital. But anyways, but the Qplex, my comment was, when there's Skate Canada, there's all these major events, Judo Cadet, it's always shared with, with the, the city. And it's always, when we have the, the, uh, the, not the NHL, but the juniors and that come, it's always shared. So that's good. But my other question, and this is, this will, this is what I really, really want to know, because I'm okay with reform, but let's make it equal. And again, not your call, but it's just a question, I don't know if you know the answer. What other, because there's twelve RSCs now, what other RSC, are they all being treated the same? So do they have five to six venues thrown in as everybody's paying? And do they have capital thrown in as well? Do you know any of that?
Well.
Thank you. No, it, it's not for, but I just, I can ask it to our minister on that.
I, I think, yeah, well, I mean, the simplest answer is, is that, um, everyone's being equal, treated equal in the sense of, um, there's a de minimis expectation on the file, which would be the sports and rec file, which is that in, in light of nothing else, nothing else existing, um, at a minimum, I guess, here, it's going to be a full share of, of operational and capital costs on regional facilities at a fifty percent tax, fifty percent population base. So everyone has that platform to start off. But I know of two regions that have gone ahead and, and developed agreements outside of that, that have been accepted by the provinces fair and reasonable, I guess, or tentatively. I, you know, I'm probably speaking a bit out of turn. I've sat with, with one of those facilities and went through their costing mechanism. But I will say this, is that the process is that the, through the transition, is that we have the working group, the working group reports back to the, the, to the board, the commission board. And we receive direction at that level as well. So as a staff member, it's hard to go outside of those directions. You know, I have to work with these people in the future. And so it's kind of, it's kind of difficult, but I, I think I won't speak for, for your CAO, but I think you will say that, you know, some of the meetings, we, we didn't get as much progress in the sense of any alternative agreements in those meetings than perhaps we would have liked to. Um, but that being said, that doesn't mean the process didn't work. It's just that, you know, perhaps it was a little more tunnel visioned and maybe we should have been a little more outside of the box. That being said, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but we are looking at alternatives based on my previous experience, but I can't say more than that.
I'm going to go to the.
That's why I said version seven earlier.
Uh, I'm going to go to the acting CAO, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, there's certainly a lot to digest. Mr. McLeod, and thanks for being here tonight to help us with it. I guess, Councilor Miller, I would take the hit for the, uh, Qplex not being a part of the regional facilities. Um, that had been discussed at this working group level, even before the working group was really conceived, when the, the regional CAOs were meeting on a bi-weekly basis, um, many months ago. And the talk of the Qplex surfaced and whether it was considered a regional facility. And in conversations with our mayor, um, we were quite concerned, as Mr. McLeod alluded to, of losing oversight and governance and control of our jewel, our marquee facility. And I think back to, uh, the Minda Project and, um, the decision the council made to, uh, offset some of the costs associated with the KVI graduation and the fact that we reserve memberships at the Qplex pool in the summertime for Quispam Sis residents. Those things could all potentially go out the window, um, if the Qplex became a regional facility. So there could be some cost savings at one end, but the concerns over the other community initiatives at the other end. Um, just in terms of the numbers, and I, I hate to bog people down with numbers, but we do have things broken down, um, from the Regional Service Commission on this fifth draft that we had today. So if you go by the numbers that, uh, we had in our twenty-twenty-two budget, um, including the regional facilities and including the tipping fee and including Envision, it was one point one eight million dollars and change. The twenty-twenty-three budget is one point five two million dollars and change. And sort of the most dramatic increase is through the regional facilities, because of the inclusion of the capital costs. Envision does go up in the twenty-twenty-three budget from two hundred and nineteen thousand to two hundred and eighty-four thousand, but this council signed off on that a couple of years ago when the Envision contract was put together. So we knew that that was coming forward. So the difference between the, the twenty-twenty-three budget through the Regional Service Commission, which includes the tipping fee, Envision, regional facilities and those other fees that Mr. McLeod mentioned, is three hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, three four two seven two seven, of which sixty-five thousand, we knew was coming for Envision. So that leaves two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, two seventy-seven, seven twenty-seven. Now, as Mr. McLeod mentioned late this afternoon, we received word from the province, um, with our twenty-twenty-three core and equalization grant. And as this council is aware, and Your Worship certainly, certainly you are as well, um, we have not received any equalization funding for a number of years from the provincial government. We've received a, what we would consider to be a small core grant. In twenty-twenty-two, the core funding that Quispam Sis receives is one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, one one five two five four. We heard today that our core funding is being reduced to ninety-two thousand, two hundred and three dollars, ninety-two, two oh three. The good news, however, is that this RSC grant, which Mr. McLeod mentioned, is one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars, one four three four eight six. So when all is said and done, this year we'll be receiving one hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars more from the province than we received in core funding in twenty-twenty-two. So I know that's a lot of numbers, um, but I, I think it is fair to, even though it came late this afternoon, just to put that on the table, that there is RSC funding, that is what the, the province is calling it, the RSC grant, um, to offset some of these costs that we are certainly very concerned about. But there is funding, net funding of a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. So I'm sorry if I confuse things more than they already were, Your Worship, but those were numbers I thought it was appropriate to, to put forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and I'm going to go to, uh, Councilor Olson, please.
Thank you, Worship. I haven't got the, uh, document, uh, thank you, Mr. McLeod, for coming in this evening.
No problem.
I'm sure you're looking forward to it.
Actually, it's exciting, because, uh, you know, it's been a, a few years since we couldn't, could do this. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's part of my role, is the budgetary process. And you saw me slide some solid waste discussion in there, so.
You're al- you're always welcome.
Thank you.
I haven't got the piece of paper here that shows about all the new employees and, uh, support staff and everything else. Are you going to double the size of your building out there?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as I mentioned, we've reduced our budget, corporate budget. The comparative, comparative corporate budgets through the region or through our comparative, so like Bev, Fredrickton and Moncton are in that nine hundred-plus range for corporate costs, and we're at five ninety-nine. And so that doesn't reflect any changes in, in the facility. So right now, we're looking at, we have some temporary arrangements, but for twenty-twenty-four, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do. And, and that being said, that's for the new CEO. People wonder why I didn't apply for that job. But, um, the, uh, you know, at the end of the day, um, it's going to be, the immediate hire is three new people. And so it's a CEO, an administrative assistant for the CEO, um, and the, um, the Community Inclusion Network Coordinator. And which is funded, as I mentioned, was funded from outside sources. So ultimately, yeah, we're looking at three bodies and trying to figure out how we want to service the area. And, you know, at the end of the day, I, I, I don't think the landfill is going to be where we want to be leading services on community development, for instance, you know? So, but that's not my call. That's going to be for the, the board and, and the C, CEO to decide on those kind of services, so, on those kind of things. And the administrat- so the CEO goes without saying, um, you know, six new services. I can't do, I've done two jobs, I don't want to do a third, you know, so we need that. Um, and the administrative assistant's going to be needed for, if we're going to have five or six new committees, that's going to have to be supported with minutes and documentation and, and processes around that, scheduling and all those sorts of things. And, uh, we don't have the staff in-house to handle that. Matter of fact, right now, I have a staff allocated to this transition and the operational portion of which we're regulated in the sense of documentation is suffering a bit. So, um, I'm looking forward to getting that body into place as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Olson, I'm going to remove myself from the chair for a second. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, ensure that people understood the capital cost aspect. So with the five regional facilities, and I believe you said that we are covering four of those for capital costs, I just want to make a, a, a small analogy to that. So if I am carpooling into St. John with yourself and you are contributing towards my gas and suddenly the transmission goes in my car. So do I go to you and say, okay, now you've got to either help me replace my transmission or hey, I, we'll buy a new car? But when I get that transmission fixed, I sell my car and I pocket the money. So I don't understand, uh, and I fail to understand, why the residents of Quispam Sis, and I know I've mentioned this before, uh, Mr. McLeod, why the residents of Quispam Sis should be left paying for capital costs of buildings that are in the City of St. John, that we have no return on that investment? And the, the, you know, the argument could be, well, the return is going to be that people will use them. They're already using them. And to Councilor Miller's point, we don't know how much capital costs have been invested in those five facilities at this point. So I am quite nervous about paying or contributing towards capital costs, knowing that these could be quite expensive and quite expensive over the next number of years. Uh, so I just wanted to put that out there, because that has been a concern. I've expressed it, as you've said, uh, Mr. McLeod. And, uh, you know, I want the residents of Quispam Sis to understand all aspects of this. So now I'm going to put myself back in the chair and I'm going to go to Councilor Donovan.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a question or comment for you, I'll let you breathe for a few minutes. But I will just say that I, I do find it interesting, and not to pick on any municipalities, but I, I find it interesting that, um, you know, since these regional service commissions have been developed, that regional seems to be the City of St. John's new favorite, favorite word. Um, I've, I've seen many articles fly across my screen on Twitter and on Telegraph Journal about, uh, and I was at that, that presentation when St. John did their catalytic, catalytic, um, project presentations. And one of those items was a, uh, a uniplex. And I, obviously, it's not on the budget for this year. I'm, I'm, I'm certain that the city would like it to be, but, um, it, I've heard over the past couple of weeks that the city is, you know, trying to, to brand this as a regional facility. This, I believe it's like fifty-five million dollar, uh, facility, and it's similar to the Qplex, but obviously, um, bigger and has more, more aspects to it. But I think it makes me nervous, because I feel like with these new regional service commissions, any new facility that comes into the City of St. John, it's automatically going to be branded as a regional. going to be branded as a regional facility. So um, I just wanted to say that I I'd, I, I don't know, I think it's it's quite frustrating that uh that all of a sudden people have new ideas for for big facilities, especially when they're not the ones that have to foot the the final bill to that. So those are my comments. I don't think I'm extremely popular on the the city council table in St. John, especially for my comments, but I I think I'll survive.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Next in queue is, uh, I'm going to go first, Deputy Mayor, I think you've already had a a comment. I'm going to go to Counselor Luck, please. You can put your light.
Your worship, am I allowed to comment on the previous speaker or is it just no que- I'm sorry, I don't know what the procedures are.
Uh, you you can certainly comment, uh, sure.
Yeah, I just I'd just like to reiterate that I think that, you know, that those concerns have been well represented by your member and and in fact, other members um at the commission level. Um, we hope they're heard and we know that there's been some formal communications by municipalities themselves to the province representing a lot of those kind of concerns and the uh, and one of the, one of the things that we're, we are taking a look at alternative, trying to take a look at alternative funding models, I guess more to the Counselor's, Miller's point earlier, um, but somewhere along the way, there has to be some semblance or control or deterrent to just being able to label something regional and it has to flow through the commission and allow the commission to, you know, either control the definition or control the process and those kind of things, which I think back to the point earlier and I appreciate the, your CEO's comments around the decision, but I know for a fact that at the end of the day, there was a lot of concern around the fact that, you know, the the Qplex was added without any consultation with Chris Pampas, you know, at the end of the day. So it was evident early that that consideration really needs to lie at the Regional Service Commission level. Um, we don't, I don't think a municipality should have the, my personal opinion is, as an operator, I don't think individual municipalities should have the right to designate something regional. I think it needs to fall through a process at the, at a regional level. So hopefully, um, that's what's heard, just just to let you know that we've communicated that, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod, and and again, removing myself from the seat. Uh, I felt that I had also requested at the commission level to have the Qplex removed because there hadn't been any discussion, so uh, you know, certainly I'll I'll take the responsibility for that at the commission level. And now I'm going to go to Counselor Luck.
Thank you, your worship, um, and thank you, Mr. McLeod, for coming tonight. It's nice to put a face to the name. Um, so I guess just a few comments and then I do have a question. Um, I um wholeheartedly agree with Mayor O'Hara in terms of her concern around capital costs. In my mind, it just doesn't make sense in terms of, you know, I guess being a responsible town where we have a solid asset management plan, where we've been responsible making sure all of our assets are taken care of and we're maintaining them, and we don't really have the same confidence or even knowledge of what's been going on with these other facilities that now we're gonna have to flip the bill for. Um, so, you know, that does really concern me, um, and I'm quite surprised that it was added to the, to the budget, kind of late in the game. Um, and I guess with that, I was curious about the accountability and control that we will have. I think you alluded to that a little bit earlier in terms of, you know, these new regional facilities will be more accountable to the CEO or someone, because in the past, from my very limited experience, it doesn't seem like we have much say in these facilities that we actually give money to and now we're gonna give that much more money to them and start, you know, kind of fixing them up so if they potentially sell in the future, we see no, you know, no value in them. Um, but I guess I wanted to know, you know, where's the accountability and control from all the other regional areas that are going to be contributing to these facilities and what does that potentially look like? Thank you.
Your worship, I can be very accurate with this one. I don't have a clue. First of all, the decision on that's gonna be way above, way above my pay grade, I guess at the end of the day, but the concerns that you're bringing up are are reiterating a lot of the things that were discussed at the table and put forward. Um, the biggest concern that I had had, and I was very clear on this, is the fact that we're putting something operational and capital-based into the budget, and I have absolutely no idea what it represents because I've never, I've never had the opportunity to scrutinize that budget, and so that's a concern for me. Um, and the the reality is, I have actually seen the capital budget, but it means nothing to me. I don't have any relative comparison on age or upkeep or maintenance or anything, to your point. So um, yeah, the, so those process and controls need to be in place for this to be effective because I I just, you know, again, to to Director O'Hara's point, we, you know, it just doesn't make sense to be putting capital in unless there's some kind of uh return on that. I don't know what that return will be, but certainly at the very least, it should be in some semblance of control, um, if not some kind of asset allocation. The landfill, which is easy, um, the landfill itself, under the act, everyone, every municipality or entity has an accountability or ownership on the landfill. Um, you know, we, we own it, but we're just a corporation. At the end of the day, the, you know, frankly, the commi- the commission board could vote to sell the asset and then the monies from that will go pay off debts and then go to each of the individual metal municipalities. Conversely, if we have some huge failure of cost control, um, and we have huge debts, you know, maybe there's uh something catastrophic that happens that we're not insured for or something, um, then um you are all, you, each of your municipalities, including Chris Pampas, are equally accountable to that. That's easy, but when you don't own the asset, that gets a bit dicey. So I think it needs, again, we've recommended it, I can't guarantee it, what could it look like? As far as I'm concerned, I would love to see us um have some kind of operational capital control over the budget in the sense of how it passes and, you know, maybe to the point of, you know, we're working with, you know, I'm putting myself out there, but I mean, I guess my end would be, we're working with the current subcommittees and subcommissions and transitioning to a point where we have oversight and then we can take economies of scale, which is with each of the five facilities through our own corporation. But um, what that would look like, who knows, but certainly in the sense of controlling costs, it's easier. But, but again, I'm no expert in those areas, uh, we'd still have to rely on the same staff and everything, but, you know, we'd get a better, we'd get a better look at it and the commission would have a better opportunity for control and decision-making, at the very least.
Thank you.
And it eliminates, it eliminates the level of bureaucracy, sorry, your worship.
Uh, Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, thank you very much for all this information. It is uh really insightful and uh uh very useful and uh you have uh a great way of revealing the truth about many of these numbers that I was pretty confused about at first blush. Um, and uh, I uh, I guess I just wanna also mention that, you know, I have grave concerns, I share concerns that are expressed here about our commitment with our residents' tax dollars on facilities, capital, the capital side of of our facilities agreement. I mean, it seems to me that the history of the facilities agreement was that it was forged out of a desire for greater unity and greater regional strength and an idea of all boats floating higher as a result of the synergy that we kind of would realize by virtue of that. And uh, the uncertainty, like the disparity of it all now, uh, really casts all that into doubt for me. And um, when, uh, I'm very appreciative of your coming here tonight, um, and I mean, you've you've come to be representative, the representative of, you know, this budget as it stands now, but by your own admission, of course, there's a lot that is just not revealed to you in, by virtue of the budget you've been kind of handed to represent, uh, namely, the capital, sort of the, what has led to capital budgets for these facilities that, and as you've said, you would love to get a greater, some greater scrutiny on that, but to carry Lux, but to Counselor Lux's point, we're, time is not exactly on our side to see that happen before we more or less move forward through a formal budget process. And I just wonder if there's any elaboration at all, perhaps, I mean, you've probably covered this ad nauseam at this point, so forgive me for, you know, oh my God, this would be a drinking game every time the facilities question comes up, you know, but uh, I just wonder-
From Hampton assures me that it would be in his council.
Oh, yeah. I also thought we could sell the landfill and just get everybody a food cycler. Uh, it seems like that's your, what we're getting at here tonight, but uh, we'll talk about that after, kickback, you know? But I just wonder if there's any kind of elaboration you can give. I'm more, like, it just comes off as though there's some sort of political motivation here that is just not, uh, that none of us are aware of. Here we are all talking about a budget over which none of us have any control, which affects all of us, and most specifically us as stewards of the residents' ta- tax dollars, and we, we have no assurance even, like, I I keep hearing that things like, you know, like uh, the mayor who sits on the commission and yourself and others who have raised this up towards the province, I hear Counselor Miller saying, is there any other region that's, you know, RSC, that's kind of in the same situation or whatever? And there's, I'm not getting any sort of sense of assurance, not that you don't express genuine concern or that you're inauthentic, I don't mean that, but there just doesn't seem to be any certainty that anybody gives a damn what uh we think of this, that that this is just gonna get jammed through and that's just how it's gonna be. And I don't, I appreciate what Counselor Miller said about, I like reform, but I like equity, and I don't see the democratic principles or representative democracy in this process, generally speaking, and I'm, I want to, I I don't really doubt the uh intentions of of uh good reform, and I think our province has been in need of some structural reform for a very long time, so I welcome that in a very general sense, but, so I just wonder, to get to a specific question, is there anything that you can speak to, to kind of elaborate just on what the next steps are for representing those concerns? I mean, generally, you've mentioned it, but is there, is there a strategy that's, that's, that's forming uh that you're aware of, uh, or is it just an ongoing kind of uh, you know, squeaky wheel gets the grease or what have you? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger, and I'm just going to caution that uh, Mr. McLeod is an employee, so I'm sure he has to be very careful with how he answers your political questions.
Um, well, I guess, I guess first of all, I would answer it by saying that in the sense of of a, of a regional principle and and what we have for regional facilities, I'm just, from a personal experience, it's nice to know, you know, my daughter swims at the Aquatic Center, you know, we know that it's it's an expense, it's a service and there's costs associated with that. And so it's nice to know that the, that people do want to keep it and fund it and do all those sorts of things, and unfortunately, the GSJ, you know, process didn't work enough so that, you know, that facility wasn't at risk because we all know for the last five years, it's been at risk. And, you know, that's daunting when you're talking to, you know, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, then now fifteen-year-old daughter and trying to work, uh, trying to work through that. So so that's, so it's nice to hear that 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 process is happening. That's my personal, kind of my personal side of it, because there's no other 50-meter pool around. Um, it's a great facility and those, you know, that's my kind of pitch. But that being said, the GSJ didn't work, obviously, and um, and even though there was a capital allocation in there, required unanimous support from each of the individual members, so I would say, you know, at the end of the day, the opportunity was there to come up with something, but it didn't happen for whatever reason, for whatever time. So that, so that, it didn't work. So something new has to come forward if we wanna save these facilities. Um, that being said, the province has said, yeah, we need, we need funding for these facilities, and so the GSJ, it's a regional facility just by definition, um, so uh, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna impose the 50/50 tax population on both capital and and operational costs. That being said, it is the one area where they have clearly said, if the communities can come up with an agreement that is fair and equitable, then they may do so, and the province can take a look at it and if they believe it will serve the purpose that they're looking for, then, then do so. The current process, and this takes it out of the political realm and puts it on the operational side, is that the working group that was set up with the transition leaders, with the CAOs, with myself, has not resulted in that, even though we're fully aware of that ability to come up with that agreement, we have not succeeded from that group to come back with that sort of recommendation. And I will say that my board has clearly indicated to me outside of that, we're, I'm really digging my hole tonight, um, they have clearly indicated to me that they're interested in that kind of agreement and have asked me to pursue that outside of the working group. So, version seven. Um, so, but the control thing is is huge for me, no matter what the recommend- recommendation is, that all has to go into play. So I think, no question from a a political standpoint, there's definitely political push here, but I don't think it's for the wrong reasons. I think, you know, from a, from a father perspective, um, I don't think it's for the wrong reasons. Does that mean I agree with how the process was done? I'll keep the comments to myself, but ultimately, to me, you know, the tool is there, the working group is part of the process setup, it hasn't succeeded in bringing anything back to the commission on that file. And, you know, in all fairness, now that we're getting more clarity, perhaps we may have, but timing is is of the essence, so my board has asked me to, with haste, come up with something. And I think we had, well, we've got a baseline that's, I can't communicate that, geez, I'm, I wonder if I'm gonna get in trouble. Anyway, that's, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Uh, we have Deputy Mayor Skryer.
Thank you, your worship, for indulging me to ask two more. I just have two questions is, one, have you heard if the Regional Facilities Corp Act will be rescinded and will now be under the Regional Service Commission? So it would be defunct? And my second question is, is there any conversations after everything we've talked about tonight about revisiting the governance model of the Regional Service Commission?
Um, the governance model of the Regional Service Commission is being revisited in the sense of voting structure and things like that. I don't think that's settled and clear at this point. I know that we're gonna go from a nine-member to a seven-member board, so um, that'll, that'll happen um January 1. So um, but I don't know how they're structuring the voting and everything yet, so that that hasn't been made clear. Um, and the first question, can you remind me what it was again, please? I'm sorry. I'm getting, I'm over 50 now, so it's-
Uh, the regional, that's fine, the regional facility-
Oh, the act, thank you. So I'm gonna say Monday, I heard it would be Tuesday, I didn't, you know, tomorrow I'll hear a different thing. I think it's, I think every option is being explored. I don't think a final decision's been made yet at this point. Um, I do know it's going to at least change because it has to accommodate the fact that the regional facilities would have some semblance of authority, or at least that's what we're being told, and I think your communication with the deputy minister suggests as much. But as far as specifics, I have no, no idea at this point, although I have my own, again, opinion on it.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see any more questions. I'll just make one comment, I'll just leave the seat one more time. Uh, just for those who don't understand, there are five facilities. One is the Trade and Convention Center, the Aquatic Center, TD Station, St. John Art Center, and the Imperial Theater. We have been contributing towards the uh costs of operations since 1998. Chris Pampas has contributed to about 10 million dollars uh to this point, and uh we are now, as I said earlier, asked, asked to be contributing towards the capital costs as well. There has been some discussion, certainly with this council, as to uh whether or not all of these facilities should be under that umbrella and uh- of these facilities should be under that umbrella, and one of the ones in question was the Trade and Convention Center, and I know that that also falls under the cultural aspect of, of, of what we have here in version number four and five, I believe, but that is, that has been brought to question, and I know that this council would like to see it removed, so I will put myself back to the chair, and I'm going to go to Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship, I was just going to make a motion on this item, but I would just lend my agreement to your comment, I would like to see the Trade and Convention Center removed from this, this, all of the calculations related to regional facilities in the greater St. John area. Anyway, I'll move, Mr. McLeod, be thanked for his presentation on the proposed 2023 Fundy Region Service Commission budget.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilor Bigger, it's been seconded by Councilor Miller, and on the question, Councilor Luck?
Thank you, Your Worship, it's more so a request if the acting CAO, Mr. Kennedy, would be able to provide us via email, just with the numbers he shared, I, they were very helpful, I'm just wondering if you could do that after the meeting, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure he's made note of that. Okay, anything else on the question? Councilor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship, I think it should be noted that, that a robust discussion took place where many questions were, were placed that really we didn't have the answers to, so I wouldn't say that we're, that we're giving this a cart launch approval at this stage, we've got to, we, we need a lot more information, so this budget hasn't been approved by the town of Quispam sis as far as I'm concerned.
Point taken, Councilor Olson, this was simply for Mr. McLeod to come in and, and give us an explanation of some of the lines that, that, that were not clear to us, so, no, this is just version number five, and we suspect that after the announcement today, that there will be ver, version number six, perhaps sometime before the end of the week, and further to that, there could be version number seven, we're just not sure.
Hopefully they tie those two together, if any luck.
Yes, yes. So on the question, seeing that there are none, please vote now.
No problem, thanks for having me.
Motion carried, seven zero. Mr. McLeod, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Certainly appreciated. Going on now to public hearings, there are none. Thank you for being in the audience also, Mr. Redell from the Grand Bay Westfield and Mayor of Hampton, Dewey Doucet, Bob Doucet. Minutes of the previous meeting. Councilor Donovan.
Thank you, I'd move that the minutes be approved as prepared.
It's been moved by Councilor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question?
On the question?
On the question, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, Your Worship, I notice under, under conflict of interest, that it doesn't state, it says disclosure of interest, no disclosures were declared, but further down in the minutes it does note that I left the meeting and that the mayor actually left the meeting, so I don't know if that's, if that is just in there or if that needs to be changed.
Thank you, it's been noted by the clerk, thank you Deputy Mayor. On the question, Councilor Olson.
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, thank you. On the question, that the minutes be approved as prepared, moved by Councilor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Onto item number eight, unfinished business, Part A, ratification of email poll, temporary appointment of Councilor Emma Olson to attend Joint Finance Committee meeting of September 22, 2022. Councilor Bigger.
Yes, Your Worship, I move council ratify the email poll of September 21, 2022, authorizing Councilor Olson to replace Councilor Thompson in the Joint Finance Committee for its meeting of September 22, 2022.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item 8B, as of May 2022, extension of four-day compressed work week, staff report from Acting CAO, Mr. Aaron Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Your Worship, as council will recall, back in April, we came forward with a pilot project that was going to run for six months for a compressed work week schedule where we would divide our staff into two teams, and one team would work Monday to Thursday, the other team would work Tuesday to Friday, and then they would switch every four weeks to ensure that there was coverage all five days of the work week. We believe that it's been extremely successful, I hate to speak in absolutes, but I don't have any indication, absolutely none, that there was any negative impact on our residents or on our business owners in the town of Quispam sis, and I think that's because of all the work that was done in advance of this with our HR department to ensure that our teams were divided equally and equitably, and it made sense to ensure that there were two people in one department, that one would be off and one would be on, and that was certainly something that we were very cognizant of, and we wanted to ensure that the high standard of service was still provided to the residents and the business owners and people of Quispam sis, and I think we've shown that we've done that, and we are looking at moving this forward on a permanent basis and continuing this after the end of the pilot, which is a week from Friday. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, and I'll just point out, I'll leave the chair for this, that the extended work day means that we are working a longer day, and that this, this organization works five days a week, so we have not done the four-day compressed work week, we have continued working for five days a week, so the service delivery is for five days. So I'm going to go to Councilor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, I just wanted to, I'll, I'll make a motion on this, but I just wanted to say congratulations to the executive team, the staff, the acting CAO, the HR Services Manager for a project that is clearly, you know, yielding some great results. It's not often that you see the kind of satisfaction rate on anything in this day and age, and I, I really appreciate the concern for striking a balance between quality of life improvement, but also services being offered effectively in the town and keeping a keen eye on both, so I just want to say congratulations for a job well done on that. I have a friend who works for the city of St. John, he's moved to a compressed work week, and he was plenty excited about it, he would be having every Friday off, he'll have a three-day weekend, and he was, I just took note anecdotally of how he was really looking forward to kind of how it would improve his quality of life as a single parent, and so, anyway, with that being said, I would just move that Acting CAO's update on the continuation of the four-day compressed work week be received and filed. Thank you.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Councilor Kirk Miller. On the question, we have questions, Deputy Mayor, well, I'm going to go first, next in queue, and that's Councilor Donovan, please.
Thank you, I have a question, just to comment, I just wanted to say that I'm glad everything went okay with the four-day work week, I've seen through Facebook and Twitter, I've, I've been monitoring how people feel about it, especially when we first decided to do it, and most of the comments from the general public and a lot of people from actually Quispam sis were extremely impressed by it, and I think it shows that, you know, we're willing to be an employer of choice, we're willing to work with our employees to make our community better, and obviously not everybody's happy, I, I, but then again, I don't think they ever like anything, so I'm, I'm glad that it went well, and I'm looking forward to seeing it continue. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilor Donovan. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, I, I just wanted to make a comment and ask our CEO a question, is, I'm, it's encouraging to see that we're changing our, the culture shift, you know, my whole life it's been eight-four, eight-five, or in my case, shift work, and, you know, it's nice to see that there's finally a shift in culture of how one thing that COVID has taught us, we can do things differently, and so I'm, I'm glad to see it, and I, I like that it's working well for the staff. The one issue that I'm very concerned about is that we can't lose sight of our delivery service. We, in Quispam sis, we have a high-quality, I believe, delivery of service through our frontline staff, through our plowing, through our recreational departments, it's superior in my mind in, in Quispam sis, so I just like assurance, if, if, has there been issues come up about delivery of service with there not being enough staff, and if so, how was it resolved to the satisfaction of everyone?
Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for the comments from Councilor Donovan and from Deputy Mayor Schreier, and I think, at the risk of being trite, if the people of Quispam sis didn't know that we were doing this, they wouldn't know that we were doing this, I think there's been absolutely no impact, and as I mentioned in my initial comments, I don't have any indication that there has been any, any negative impact, and I can use a couple of anecdotes, our Parks Department decided to do this operationally about eight years ago, I don't think anybody knew that that was happening, it was an operational decision, the flowers were still watered, the lawns were still mowed, the ball fields were lined, the trails were maintained, they went about their business through the spring and summer months, they decided not to do it in the winter just because of darkness at the, at the end of the day, and they've decided to do that as well as part of this, they're going to revert to their regular schedule during the fall and winter months. Something else that was interesting throughout this process is there were times, and it took a little while, but everybody knew who was on your team and who wasn't on your team, and on a Monday, you'd be in here, and so-and-so would walk through the door, and, what are you doing here, you're supposed to be off here today? Well, I wanted to meet with this person, or this person needed that thing, and that, that's what we do here at the town of Quispam sis, and I can't speak for other municipalities, but I can speak on behalf of the staff of this municipality, the dedication and commitment that the staff of the town of Quispam sis have to their jobs is, is phenomenal, and I think back to the ice storm of 2013 that happened over the Christmas holidays, and we had staff at our warming center all throughout the Christmas holidays, there were people there all night Christmas Eve into Christmas morning, then a shift came in at 6:00 AM through Christmas Day, we had people there on Boxing Day, nobody blinked, nobody thought, well, this is not the way I wanted to be spending my holidays, because they wanted to be there to, to serve the people of this community. We saw that with our flood of 2019, that the first day that the water started to rise and we had to activate our sand station and our emergency measures operation was Easter Monday, which was a holiday for our staff, but there they were, out at the Qplex and getting ready and being there to provide the service for our residents. A more recent example is what happened last week, and I was out of the country last week, but the team, as they always do, stepped up, and there were people who were supposed to be off on Friday, but Hurricane Fiona was barreling towards the Maritimes, so again, those folks that weren't necessarily supposed to be here on Friday, they were here, there was an 8:30 conference call on Saturday morning just to gauge how things worked, how things went the night before and what damage there was, involving the fire chief and the police department and our emergency preparedness team, and thankfully, we were spared Fiona's wrath, and unfortunately, our friends in other parts of the Maritimes were not, but again, our, our staff was there, and, you know, I think, as the deputy mayor said, our, our residents expect a high level of service, and I think our staff strive to ensure they receive that high level of service, and I think we've seen that throughout this process, so I, I don't tell that to council and to our public as a way to elicit kudos, but I think it's important to realize that sometimes our staff does deserve some kudos for the things that go on behind the scenes, and I think what the Parks Department did was a great example, it, nobody knew they were working a compressed work schedule and they've been doing it for eight years, and again, as I mentioned with Councilor Donovan, if people didn't know we were doing this, I don't think they'd know, because I don't think there has been any reduction in the service that we provided over the last six months. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Going now to Councilor Miller.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I actually applaud the four-day work week, I, I think it's great, I think, good on you, but I do have a question that I'm going to throw to You, Your Worship, to the Human Resource Manager, on a question, and maybe she can get back to us next meeting, not right now, so historically, we have nine statutory holidays, those were given basically because people work five-day work weeks and things like that, so we've compressed our work week, which I think is perfect, from five to four, which is basically a 20% compression, so for the people that are working five days a week, that have stayed like that, they're only, they're going to get nine stat holidays. For the people that are working four days a week, we didn't address it during the summer because it was, it was a pilot, and technically, we're only supposed to have three stat holidays, we end up having five. So my question or suggestion, or I'd like to see something come back next meeting, whether they stay the same, because for me, if you compress the work week, you also compress the stat holidays, because if you do hour by hour, it works out to a 0.7% increase in pay, if you want to do it that way, but also for the union agreements, if you're going to start looking at those, because we had this in the Fire Board, we went 24-hour shifts, you start looking at the wording in the, the agreement, is not per days, but a week is four days if you're on the four-day, and, and again, but to me, it's more or less the, the compression of the days is perfect, but it's, it's just a question on suppression, suppression of the stat holidays, because we're going from five to four days, which takes the nine stat holidays to 7.2, so it, it's just, I don't know what's going on in the rest of the country, because that's kind of a question, so this is all new to everybody, again, I support the four days 100%, just, but if you have somebody working five days that stays like that, they're getting nine days at 7.5 hours, the other people are getting nine days at 9. whatever, my math's not good right now, but it's just a question maybe to come back with a suggestion, recommendation, or for the next meeting, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. Councilor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and again, I just want to say kudos to the acting CEO and the senior leadership team, I think it's wonderful that, you know, this initiative has produced such positive results, more so for the record, I would just like for some consideration for future, I know that some teams are working Monday to Thursday, others are working Tuesday to Friday, and I know this came up in the past, and I'm assuming there'll be more of this in the future, where we'll be meeting as council during the workday, and again, a lot of us are still working traditional Monday to Friday, and I know in the past, the request was to either do it at the beginning or the end of the week, because if you're traveling for work, sometimes the middle of the week makes it even more challenging to attend meetings, and I guess, I'm not sure if the way it's scheduled, I guess I'm throwing that out there as something to be top of mind, because I wouldn't want the four-day compressed work week to be a deterrent for never being able to have a meeting on a Monday or a Friday, because not thinking of even just this council, but future councils, if we're having more meetings during the workday, it would be ideal to have it beginning of the week or end of the week to make sure that people who are traveling for work can actually schedule, you know, to be in attendance, so I just wanted to bring that up as something to keep in mind for future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. The motion has been moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Councilor Miller, on the question. Seeing there are no further questions, please vote now on the motion. Motion carried, seven zero. Onto item number nine, correspondence, recommendations from the Joint Finance Committee on Shared Regional Budgets. Recommendations, September 22, 2022, meeting minutes and proposal, 2023, Canterbury Cases' Regional Joint Board Police Commissioners, Canterbury Cases' Valley Fire Department, and Canterbury Cases' Public Library Budgets. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship, I would move that council further propose Canterbury Cases' Regional Joint Board of Commission, Commissioners 2023 Budget to the budget deliberation process.
Thank you, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Councilor Olson, on the question. No, you don't have to. Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Councilor Olson, please vote now on the question. Motion carried, seven zero. The next one, Council- The next one, Councillor Luck.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to move that council refer the proposed Kennebec Cases Valley Fire Department Inc. 2023 budget to the budget deliberation process.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councillor Luck, seconded by Councillor, or Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, seeing there are none, please vote now. And our final one is the Kennebec Cases Public Library. I have that at seven zero. Motion carried for the Fire Department budget at seven zero. Councillor Donovan, please, the last motion.
Thank you. I'd move the council refer the proposed Kennebec Cases Public Library Board's 2023 budget to the budget deliberation process.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councillor Donovan, seconded by Councillor Bigger. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item 9B, requests for waiving or reducing facility rental fees at town facilities in 2023. Staff report from Director of Community Services. And you have a motion there. Councillor Olson?
I would move that the town council, I would move that the town approve the waiving of the 2023 facility rental fees requested by Canadian Blood Services, the Royal Canadian Legion Branch Number 58, and KV 3C, in addition to the signage fees at the QMA and Qplex for the Kennebec Cases Crime Stoppers, and the monthly meeting fees at the Moosehead Conference Center for the KV Quilt Guild.
Thank you. Councillor Olson. It's been moved by Councillor Olson, seconded by Councillor Luck. On the question, please. Councillor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just through you to the Director of Community Services. I just wonder, there was sort of an either-or option there with the KV Quilt Guild on the charge structure. One's a little higher than the other. And I, I just wondered, do we, do we opt like an RFP to kind of just take the, the lesser sort of number there? Or is, how is the determination made? Or do you know yet what will happen there?
So I have to tread lightly. Thank you, Your Worship. The proposed application from the KV Quilt Guild was for either the reduction of rate, and then they charged rental fees at the Moosehead Conference Center, or that they would recharge the full rate, and then we would donate the facility at Qplex at the Moosehead Conference Center. So I basically selected the Moosehead Conference Center. I felt it was a cleaner, other than the reduction of rate and then charge for the Moosehead Conference Center, I thought it would just be a little cleaner if we went with that option to donate the conference center for their monthly meetings. And then we would charge full rates for the Room A at the Quispam sis Memorial Arena. Thank you. We will go to Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. But my question is just on the motion and the process. I believe that the, it should be forwarded to the budget process and not approved at this point.
Madam Clerk?
Your Worship, through you, I do believe that since we had this policy in place that council does approve it, and then, then that's presented as part of the budget.
So if you have any discussion on that this evening, we will entertain that. Deputy Mayor Schreier?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted clarification on the process, because it seems to be the only category where we're actually approving something prior to the budget discussions. Everything else has been referred to the budget, all the budgets through the fire and police and library and other requests. So I, I just questioned the process. That was all.
Thank you. I'll go back to the clerk.
Again, through you, Your Worship, until the final budget is, is approved by council, then any changes could happen. But when, this has been presented to council in the past, it's been approved. And then this is what will be presented when, at the full-day budget meeting, if council wishes to make a change to it. Until the budget is approved, they could do so.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And yes, your point is taken, Deputy Mayor Schreier, that the, the word approval or referred to is, is noted. Thank you. Item number 10 is bylaws. There are none. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. On the question. So it's been moved by Councillor Olson, seconded by Councillor Luck. On the question, there are no further questions. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. And bylaws, there are none. No new business reports. Councillor Olson?
Move we receive and file reports, Your Worship.
It's been moved by Councillor Olson, seconded by Councillor Donovan. On the question? Councillor Donovan, please.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to second it.
On the question, it's been moved by Councillor Olson, seconded by Councillor Donovan. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Business arising from Committee of the Whole, there is none. Wishing everyone joy this week as the week moves forward. We have a motion for adjournment by Councillor Olson, seconded by Councillor Donovan. On the question? Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Good night, everybody. Have a nice evening.